Will be with the board and we will be presenting those results from your rankings and sharing those with the board members. And then at that point, they'll also be developing the interview schedule, questions that they're going to establishing parameters. And those are the things that are going to happen at April 15th. So that'll be some more training for the board as well. So any initial questions on the upcoming calendar? Arnie?
No, I'm good.
Anthony Johnson has raised his hand. Anthony?
Yeah, so I'm just curious, when it's on, when it says board, that means this committee, right? Not just the board?
Actually, I believe that, well, so when we're talking about screening applicants, it's the board and the screeners. So that you are the screening committee altogether. And I believe the screening committee will also provide feedback the night when they're presenting the results. I think there's an opportunity to provide feedback to the board, but it's actually the board that makes the selection of candidates, the decision to select the candidates that are going to interview with your input. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so let's move on. I have a kind of a template here of our confidentiality agreement, which again, we've all talked about. You turn those in and sign those. Just basically, we want to reiterate that this is confidential process. We are sometimes going into executive sessions. Anything that's covered and talked about there, especially regarding candidates, needs to remain within those meetings and not be talked about outside of them. The in, when you sign these agreements, it talks a lot about not contacting candidates. And those are kind of the, like, you're just going through the ranking process as screeners. The board will at some point during the process, they will be looking into internet searches and things like that. But we do not want anyone immediately seeing the names and then starting to Google them or or see what their Facebook page is and things like that. We really want you to make sure you steer clear of that. And you sign this agreement that you're agreeing to do that and that you're going to base your rankings on the application materials that you view in Revelus only. Any questions about confidentiality and where and when you can talk about things? All right, so screening, yes, did somebody? Okay, so screening do's and don'ts, we're going to kind of go over some of the things. What we want you to encourage you to do is to read every application carefully in its entirety. There is a lot of information that you'll see on the application in Revelus. So we usually suggest that you allow approximately an hour for each of the applications in order to get through all the sections and everything that they provided, including their resume and letters of interest. And there's their summary narrative statement about their qualities and qualifications. There's a lot of detail, so we just want you, encourage you to take your time going through that. We also want to try have you keep an open mind. Everyone is different, has different backgrounds. We just want to keep an open mind because people are going to show up in different ways, especially when they're on paper. And really, that's all you're going to get to see is just black and white, what people look like on paper. And later on in the process, you know, those things might change, but that's what we're focusing on. We want you to look for candidates who match the qualities and qualifications that were adopted by the board, like I mentioned. We want to keep ourselves rooted in that lens when we're going through the materials and the applications. Most importantly, we don't want to compare candidates to each other. We just want to focus on their application and the qualities and qualifications as you go through each individually. You're going to be looking at current letters of reference. And we do want you to look at those. We want you to keep in mind that we're looking for nothing older than three years or maybe not a letter of reference that has no date on it because those tend to be a little bit stale and maybe not a good reflection of what the candidate is right now. So try and focus on the more recent, the better. With some have given lots of them, but again, they're only required to give us three. So or three references, not necessarily three letters of reference. Uh, let's see. Oh, yes. Three of five, but three is required. I apologize. Um, make a lot of decisions about the application that are based on any of the federally recognized statuses. So don't make any decisions based on age or economic status, familial status, gender, gender identity, marital status, and mental disability, national or ethnic origin, physical disability, pregnancy, race, religion, sexual orientation, or veteran status. Except for when they're applying a veteran's preference. We do have a portion that I'll talk to you about that in a little while. Uh, let's see. Again, the big don'ts are to not contact the candidates or references or do any internet searches. Just solely rely on the application materials. I'm sure we'll say that a lot during this. And I'll put this out to you. I just had curiosity out of everyone here. How many of you have actually served on a hiring committee before or done hiring in the past? And if you're willing, if you're willing, is anyone share any thoughts or wisdom that you have about the process? Yes, several people. Okay, you've got a lot.
I have a question, please, Jen. Can, what is, what are the parameters around speaking with fellow members of the screening committee after we've signed our confidentiality agreement? What is, what are the parameters of us communicating with each other as a team?
Um, so for this purpose of the ranking stuff, we do not encourage you to communicate with each other while you're going through this process. We want this to be an individual process where you're reviewing applications and you are taking your ranking sheets and you're looking at what you have, the qualities and qualifications, and you're making your rankings based on your own. When you start to talk with other people, you can tend to be influenced by their thoughts or maybe personal knowledge that they have as well. So we do encourage you to not talk about it with anyone during this process. When you get to the point where you come back together and you're in executive session, we would like you to not discuss candidates and stuff outside of the executive sessions and have those conversations. So mostly, we'd like to keep it clear in these kind of meetings.
Jen?
Yes?
This was a real concern that I heard from a lot of folks, and I talked to Vince about this yesterday.
Okay.
And and wanted, you know, and he absolutely is in in agreement with you that we're trying to avoid group think, so we want everybody, you know, chatting it up in between time. But that night, I think it's the 15th.
Uh huh.
He assured me that there would be discussion time, that the screening committee had significant verbal input with the board at that time.
Yes.
And that was one of the complaints, I think, that a lot of people that did this a few years ago had. Was was that they didn't feel like they had an opportunity to to express to the board or to each other. So I I just wanted to at least pass that piece on that Vince told me yesterday.
Yes, thank you for sharing that, and that is true. Vince did also tell me, he said that when you do come together, and I just wanted to encourage that there will be time for those discussions to take place, especially with screeners to the board. But just that you know that those discussions only take place at that meeting during the executive session when we're sharing that information and the names and things like that. We need to keep everything confidential, which means we don't want you talking it out, talking about it outside or amongst each other, outside of these meetings because we don't release any information until we get to the finalist process. So but yes, you will have an opportunity at the April 15th meeting. Once your rankings are submitted and the report is given by Vince, then he will also allow for some time for those discussions to take place. So please know your voice is going to be heard if you have concerns or anything like that that come up or if you just want to share your preferences.
Brian and Bree had their hands up earlier.
Thank you. I can't seem to see while I'm presenting who has hands up.
That was just a hand up for having been through the process.
Yes. And did anybody have any thoughts or wisdom, if you have been through a similar process, to encourage others to focus on or anything about those do's and don'ts, things to keep in mind? Not, it's okay, we can keep moving.
Is the next, is the next meeting only online as well? Because I had seen that we would be receiving a link? Or would it be an opportunity to be hybrid? Because sometimes those conversations that you can have with your peers and coworkers and the committee are really hard to have online, to have that organic conversation and to really discuss when you're online versus in person.
Understood, and you're right. Devin, did you want to speak more to that? I know you were asking about whether it could be virtual or not, but I haven't decided.
Yeah, in a, in my discussion I had had with Kim, it's difficult to have these high, it's either everybody's in person or everyone's virtual is the best format. The hybrid meetings make it either difficult for the people online to hear and interact or difficult for the people in the room. So that kind of cross piece there makes it difficult. So if everybody can be in person, it could be done that way. But I think the preference was virtual. And correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Nope, that that's right. It's it's way too difficult to try to facilitate this hybrid. If if everyone could come together, that would be fantastic. But the likelihood of that is very rare. So I'm going to probably say we're going to most likely be virtual. It's, and since it's not just peers talking to each other amongst each other, it's actually at a public meeting, there's there's just not opportunity for that even if we are together. And that should not be happening. So it's just cleaner that way. So and that's just not allowed. So there'll be time to voice, you know, your opinions and feedback at that public meeting. But side conversations with peers and stuff, that's, that won't be happening.
Maybe?
I just, I just want to say too, having been through this last time, just for the screening committee, and I want to say I really do appreciate everybody's involvement. But I also know that it is difficult after you all do give your thoughts and opinions. You don't necessarily know what the board does with it. And I know that's difficult, but that really is the process. Is at some point, you guys hand it off to us and you don't, you lose track of exactly what we do with your feedback. And I just give you a heads up that that is, that is the way it is. And so you don't get to see behind the curtain, not that there's much of a curtain, but that that is how the process is. So, you know, I think sometimes that's difficult, not wanting to see the whole thing through.
Great. Thank you very much for sharing that. Yes.
Is there, is there a reason why we're only involved in a part of the process and not the whole thing? Is it like legal or a board decision? Just out of sheer curiosity?
Um, I guess.
I I could probably speak to the fact that it's the board's legal responsibility to hire a superintendent. And that's the bottom line, right? It's, it's the board's responsibility. It's their job.
And just like when you have other committees that are formed to make recommendations to the board, that's essentially what the screening committee is. You make recommendations to the board, but it's up to the board ultimately to decide which path to take. And and generally, they do take your feedback into consideration as they're making those decisions. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to some more of the do's and don'ts that we have covered. While we're reviewing the applications, we want you to, don't build excuses for people who do not meet the requirements that the board has established. I know this is really hard for some of us who are real softies and we really want to make sure that the people stay within the applicant pool and it's difficult to cut people. But it's really important that you make sure you're focusing on those qualities and that we're finding somebody who meets those requirements that have been established. We don't want you to eliminate candidates just because they have more qualifications than you expected. Like you think they're overqualified or because they're currently making more money than your district is offering. One of the things is that with this, it being overqualified, you know, you're you're getting the best superintendent you can. That's what your focus is and and you want to keep them in there. If they're overqualified, that's not really up to us to make assumptions as to why or what their motivation is for applying just based on the what they make now or necessarily where they are, if they're overqualified. We don't want you to dismiss someone who is upwardly mobile or particularly ambitious. That just means that they're working hard and that they will probably, it doesn't mean that they can't serve your students really, really well. So again, I just want to kind of point out that you don't want to look at something that you see in the applications and make an assumption about the person based on that. We don't want you to dismiss someone who is more mature than you might expect. It takes time to gain experience and skills. And also the positives, there's superintendents who are well into their 70s that are doing great work here in Oregon. And we can't make decisions about who we're going to keep or not based on age. Now, one of the things is that you might not know anymore is that we did change some of our parameters because it did previously show some personal information about how old people were. And we have now eliminated that information from being viewed by screeners. And we want to encourage that if anybody sees some personal information that does show up in the applications related to someone's age or their driver's license or confidential information, that's not supposed to be showing up in your screener stuff, so please let me know and we will make changes. But if you do happen to see something or you make assumptions based on somebody's tenure at their jobs and when they graduated, as to how old they are, we still don't want you to make any decisions based on those ages. So just keep that in mind. Also, we don't want you to turn down candidates who are from out of state simply because you think that they might not be like Oregonians. There are a lot of people who really, really want to move to Oregon. Some of them have been here before and they want to move back after they've done a lot of things elsewhere. They are applying here intentionally and we have to assume that that's what they're doing is that if they're applying here, they want to be here. So a lot of Oregon boards do tend to favor in-state candidates. And while that's, there's good reason for that, we can also miss opportunities to get really great talent in your district by keeping that as like, I'm not going to do that or keeping that kind of mind frame that you don't want to hire outside of Oregon. We encourage you to not nitpick over little things. Real people are making applications here and they do make mistakes. We encourage you to, if there's something that you see a mistake that is, it raises some concern for some reason about whether that person meets the qualities and qualifications that you're asking for, you could always raise that with the the board on the April 15th meeting. And then they can develop interview questions to ask that person in the interview process to maybe clarify on something like that if it really gives you some true reason for concern. Again, we're going to reiterate, do not contact candidates or references or make any information or materials you receive available to anyone outside of the screening committee. Everything stays here in these meetings. The the stuff that you're writing down on in your ranking and stuff, we need you to be careful with that information, keep it confidential. Don't leave it laying out in a place where others can view it. Just please be very careful with that as well. And then, you know, don't share information about the candidates that you might personally know until they become finalists. So there might be people on this list that you know, and there might be things you know about that person. But right now, during this two weeks, we want you to just focus on the applications and screening them based on what you see in the applications and how they meet the qualities and qualifications. And then again, if you have concerns or if you have something you would like to share that you have personal knowledge of, that's something that would come out in the finalist process. I think I've covered everything on there. So let's go to the next implicit bias. So I did send around our our biased publication. I can't remember the title of it right now, but I did send that around with your training packets. And we just really want to kind of highlight some things with this tonight. And we'll allow you to kind of read that on your own. Bias can occur intentionally or unintentionally. We just want you to be aware of how bias might affect your decisions during this process, not just in the interview process, but also with your ranking of the application. We just want you to recognize those biases and maybe try to put them aside and be as objective as possible. We want you to focus on the content of what they put into their application and how it relates to the qualities and qualifications. Try to dispel your first impressions. If you read something in there and it just immediately gives you a thought, that's probably something that will be considered a bias. And let's see, we just want to rate candidates against their job competencies or if they're meeting the ideal candidate profile. We don't want to compare them to other candidates. And just to justify your decisions, that you can give articulate reasons for those decisions. So one of the things we kind of, when we're talking about this is that, you know, everyone has bias. We just want you to recognize them, you know, some similar or some examples that we say is like, if I were to say, I like the smell of bacon, I just love cured meats cooking, and you happen to have a pot-bellied pig as a pet, you might have an impression of me talking about cooking your pet that you would have an initial first impression of me. And that would be your bias when you start to go look over things that I I have written down as far as my candidacy. I think that the other thing that you want to think about is that we have natural correlations that we make with certain words that you might find or certain situations. And, you know, like if I say peanut butter, most of you might say jelly. But if you were in Pennsylvania where I'm from, a lot of us say peanut butter and bananas. When I was nine months pregnant with my first child, I would have said peanut butter and I would have said pickles after it. So I just want you to think about those correlations. Depends on where you come from, where you've grown up, your lived experience. So just keep these kinds of examples of, if you have an immediate feeling when you see a word or you see something that they had in their application, that there might be some bias going on there. And just take a moment to be aware of it and maybe push it aside and continue on with what you're doing. All right, so now we will move into, as an example, resume. I just want to kind of review some of the things that you might be see. This is a little outdated. It's an older resume, but it gives you the typical information that you see. If you look here, you'll see that they were most recently the superintendent in the Spray School District from July 2007 to present. That's an extremely long tenure, which means they're very experienced. You have a person here with a lot of information to come along to the position. They have a lot of experience and they were at Condon before that. So those are just certain things that you look at the dates of when they were in things, the kinds of, the population of the schools that they were working for to compare to what you have going on too. You want to see that there's continuous employment. Those are the things you're looking for and tenure. You also want to look for gaps in employment. Attention to detail with some like really glaringly spelling or grammatical errors. As I said, we don't want you to focus on those kind of small things and small mistakes. But if it seems like it's becoming apparent throughout their resume, that might be something that would, you know, cause some concern. See if they have, yes?
How do we look at something like this guy who says he was superintendent slash principal? And we don't know how how many years he served in each of those roles in that district? So.
Addy, so some of the really small schools here in Oregon?
Yeah.
You were the superintendent and the principal. And in some cases, like out there in Spray, there's a good chance you drove the bus this morning because the bus driver was sick.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're both.
Yeah, in this situation, the slash is not that they were serving in two roles. They would put that superintendent principal is their title. That is what they they did.
And that's really common in districts, say, sub 300. Like if you go to Wallawa, I think Wallawa just hired a elementary principal slash superintendent. And they're about 260, 270 kids. So it's, it's pretty common.
St. Paul just did that around here too, as well. So that's a good question. That's something to be looking out for as far as titles and things like that. And if you have any questions, let's let us know. Let's see. So as I was saying, I think I was saying you want to kind of pay attention to if there's any gaps or if they've maybe switched careers into something in the private sector and they have private sector experience, that might be something to look, if there's anything that seems like it's a little bit different than the rest of the resume. So like we highlighted a situation here where they went into private sector consulting for a period of two years. And while that's not a bad thing to do something different and it's not a bad thing to have some periods in your resume that have something that's not what you would really be looking for as far as like that it's continuous in the same role. We just want you to kind of pay attention to things like that because you might want to ask during the interview process about like, what was their motivation for that change? And it might give you a little bit more information about who that person is and their interests and the and the reasons why they made certain decisions in their career path. Let's see. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to the cover letters. And here we have a sample letter of interest. We highlighted this statement here where it says, you know, my most recent position as superintendent principal of the Spray School District, the school went from receiving a low rating on a statewide report card to a satisfactory rating. Now, while what we're looking for, this is, this is an example that's a statement of fact, but it doesn't really say like why it's relevant or what part this person had in that going from low to satisfactory. It's, it's just kind of a statement of fact. It doesn't really give us the why. It doesn't, and that's what we're looking for. We're looking for the why. If they had any part in this, then what did they do to assist that? And that's something that you want to consider. Because in a, another sample letter where they have the same statement, they actually embellish a little bit more on it or elaborate a little more on it. And they say that, you know, in my most recent position, that it went from low to strong. The district also met its annual yearly process for the first time in this past year. And I was able to accomplish this through strong leadership and a focused and dedicated staff. So you see how one statement is different from the other, and that's really what you want to be looking for. You want to be, they can put all sorts of statements of things that happened in the district, but what you're really looking for is like, well, what was your involvement in that? So a lot of things that you'll see with cover letters that you want to pay attention to is that some of these people are applying to multiple positions at the same time. So they tend to put some, you know, canned language in it or just some standard statements that don't really show that they've kind of done their work to see what your community is about, what your school is about, and how they will connect with that community. You know, like this statement says, I'm barely familiar with your community. I know the strong support and value of education as well as creative innovation, entrepreneurial spirit and livability in Sample, Oregon or in Coos Bay, Oregon. Working as an educational leader for the community, I would be, would be a wonderful marriage of opportunity and good fortune. So they they talk, like, these are really pretty words and everything like that. But it doesn't give any specific examples about Coos Bay. It doesn't say like how they would connect with something that you are known for. So just pay attention to things like that, that it's okay to have, you know, nice language in there, but it's not really telling you anything then, you know. What is it doing? Why is it there? So just to consider that. Um, right. And then we're going to move on to some of the things you'll see in there that we do require is the three letters of reference. And so we'll have more, but as you're reading through these, you kind of want to pay attention to like the one kind of standard letter of reference is not the same as another. Like this one, for example, is very good. It's pointing out, highlighting, you know, it works with the board and community and staff, exceptional ability to communicate, willing to listen, come to consensus, vision, communicates effectively. So all these things that they're highlighting are excellent examples of some of the qualities and qualifications that this district may be looking for. And this person has taken the time to actually put those into this letter of reference to really show that they know and that they're talking up and giving the person a great letter. And especially at the end, when it says, I cannot think of a better person or a person who could be a better candidate for any superintendency. Now, this is a fabulous letter of reference. Like they are really like this person and they are giving you some great qualities that you can consider.
Except that if I read this, this reads to me like someone who looked at what our qualifications were, our. Except that if I read this, this reads to me like someone who looked at what our qualifications were, our requirements, and wrote a letter because he hasn't said what he did in that role that made him spectacular.
I see what you're saying, Addie, but I want to point out. Yes, this is a letter of reference, so this is a letter is not the same as the interest letter that we just talked about. Um, so the person who wrote this letter of interest may have written it three years ago. And you would want to look at that and see if it's more recent, or if they asked somebody to fill something out, you know, several years ago, they wouldn't be looking at this position and putting those qualities in, for example. So that's just one of the things I would point out is I would look at the date as when it was. And if you see the date was written like this week and they put all these things in it and it happens to meet every one of our qualifications, that's amazing, but they didn't really explain how the person did that, then I would question that letter of reference. They asked somebody to write them a letter of reference and they, they may have asked them to, hey, I'm applying for this job. Could you make sure that you point these things out? But if it was from two years ago and has all these qualities in it, that's probably unlikely that that's what has occurred. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But that's an excellent point and thank you for being, uh, for bringing that up because it's something that you do want to consider if you're looking at it like, oh my gosh, it has all these qualities. Did they just pick it out and, and write some stuff in? That's the kind of stuff and the kind of eye we want you to have as you're reviewing these things. Uh, be able to read between the lines, um. Pay attention to the tone of the letter. Um, and if it's detailed versus something that's maybe not so detailed. So I'll give you another example right here of a letter of reference that they asked somebody to write for them. Um, whether it was recently or a while ago, and they have things like, um, bringing in modular buildings by adding staff. Um, assistance to me as I worked as a teacher through the plan for improvement process. Um, you know, put the sample district is the right position for attaining adequate yearly progress. So like, first of all, I would look at this and some of these qualities, there's only really three and they're not, they're kind of lackluster, like bringing modular buildings, that's the quality that you're recommending this person for. Um, it doesn't really say much about who they are. Um, and uh, also, I would be concerned when I would look here and I say that, you know, I was, I became an administrator under Mr. Smith. Now there's kind of a, a different, so this person served under Mr. Smith and Mr. Smith asked them to write a letter of recommendation. That's kind of like a power dynamic that's a little odd right there, but it happens. But the fact that he was talking about the experience he had with him was, you know, assistants writing a plan for improvement for somebody. It just seems like an odd thing to put into the letter. Also, they say at the bottom, after they've written this short and not very detailed letter, they say, if you have any questions, you can reach me. Sometimes some people put that in there because they really want to just rave about the person more. They're like, please call me. Sometimes they put kind of a lackluster um, letter of reference and then they say you can reach me because they want you to call back and kind of let them speak candidly. They don't want to put something in the letter that they're giving to the person. So um, just pay attention to little things like that. It could be a red flag or it could just be that this person didn't have as much experience and probably shouldn't have been asked to write a letter of recommendation. Alright, now we're going to move on to what we're going to see um, as we go through the ranking process, and this is a sample of your rating sheet. Now I did customize one and put it into your training packet for you specifically. With this search, it has listed, um, your um, qualities and qualifications. But basically what you're going to do is you're going to have a candidate rating sheet for each candidate that you're reviewing. And you're going to want to sit with these while you're going over the applications and you're going to want to put this information in because this is how you're going to see if all the stuff they presented to you in the application is actually meeting the requirements that you want for this position. Um, so their name and their current position, you're going to be able to see whether or not they have their master's degree, if they have um, their administrator's license, or they have one in the other state. If they don't show any proof of that, then how do you know? Um. You can rate their experience, if they have teacher experience, if these are things that you want, building level experience, um. And you can just put yes or no, so, and it shows how many years too, so you can show, yes, they do have it, but they only have a year of teaching experience, like. And then when you're looking at this and you're rating them, then you'll kind of be able to tell like how much experience. And if you wanted three years and they only have one, then they don't meet your requirements. Um. We want you to take the written notes because it's really, um, on these papers, because when you get to the ranking process, which we're going to talk about shortly, it's really important that you have these things here in front of you and you can see it for each candidate. Um. Because it continues on, not just these um, requirements, but also the qualifications. And then you're going to number the qualifications and then at the end of it, you'll see how they rate. Um, how you you'll see for yourself how you think that they rated on each of those qualifications that we're looking for. And then at the end of the rating sheet, you'll have your um, chance to give recommendations. Um, to talk about, um, any awards they've had, talk about their letters, um, if they were from employers or an immediate supervisors, if they were from board members. Because it usually would be nice if they could provide, you know, a couple of different kinds. Make any comments that you have regarding this candidate. You can mark here down at the bottom. I didn't switch again. You, you can mark down here at the bottom whether or not you, um, recommend them for an interview or not. But the most important thing to do is that as you're kind of going through this and for each candidate, I would recommend that um, when you're done doing all of them, that you kind of put what you think is your, your ranking for them. Like you want to say number one, like if you pull out your number one candidate, I would recommend putting number one at the bottom of this. Because when you get to the ranking part and you're actually going to put this into Revellis, it'll be really helpful for you to have those rankings already set, um, on the paper. It's just a, a recommendation, but I'm sure everybody has their own way. And what you want to keep in mind is that you're going to be ranking them as number one is your top. And that's the one that you most want in, and then ten is the lowest. You're going to want to rank those all, each candidate that you're looking at, you're going to want to select a candidate for one through ten to fill all of those numbers. You don't want to have anybody who's tied. You don't want to select, you know, I have two number fours. You have to pick one of them as four and one of them as five. Um, so that we have one through ten. If you have more than ten that you really like and want to recommend for interview, unfortunately, you can only give us ten. So just think about that. As you're doing those rating sheets and you're going through them, you can begin to start putting the numbers as you feel you're going along, or you might want to wait until the end so you can make those decisions. Um. Yes. Is there a question?
Yeah, I just have a question. The previous, previous page where you showed the, the ranking, yeah, that one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is that similar to what we have in our packet?
Um, this is just a sample one. It is the qualifications, the rating sheet, the one that you're looking at right here is just a sample. But we have customized one for this search and it does contain just the qualifications that you, your board selected. And so that is in the training packet that I sent to you.
Yeah, my, my question would be if there's things like puts kids first or effectively communicate and lis- listening skills. How would we maybe draw that out of paper? When we're just looking at a paper packet?
Um, one of the best ways that you'll be able to draw that is from the candidate themselves. So they are required as part of this process to submit a narrative that says how they meet the qualities and qualifications that this district has, um, approved. So it's on our marketing flyer. It's also in the application portal, so they can look at it and review it when they're getting ready to prepare that narrative. And they have, um, a five hundred word essay that they're able to ra- write that says, hey, here's the quality and qualifications you're asking for, and here's how I meet it, and they're going to be telling you how they meet it. And so when you're getting through that and you're reading it and also their letter of interest will be another one that you want to look at because those two items from the candidate won't be as expressive as a resume, but those two items will definitely help you to rate what you think, how they answered that question, if they really do have that. And it's all based on, remember, during this process, it's just based on what they provide. If they don't give enough in that summary and you don't have anything to put, then you can put, you know, that it's below expectations or you didn't see anything in there that said that they meet that qualification.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I don't think there's anything.
Michelle, that's, um, sorry, Michelle has her hand up still, Michelle?
Sorry? Yeah, I just had a question. Um, last time I think, um, we were asked to keep all of our handwritten notes and then we were going to be asked to turn them in. Is that something that's? I'm sorry, I didn't see that in the training packet or I'm just trying to review that now, but is that something that we will be required to do?
Yeah, that's something that I, uh, plan to cover here is that I wanted to kind of make everyone um, aware that these are public records. And remember how I kind of said, make sure you keep them somewhere where nobody else can read them on a desk or anything like that. You want to be very careful about them and you do want to keep them all together. If you're making notes additionally on a, a legal pad, that's not on your rating sheets. Um, if you're writing it down somewhere else, please try and keep everything together because all of these things that you're writing about them are public records. Um, and while they're confidential for the most part and they're considered under executive session and things like that, um, there are points where it could be disclosable information if um, litigation came up for some reason and people wanted to view those, sometimes there are. So yes, we do need to have them. They do need me, need to be submitted back to, um, your, uh, board assistant. And, um, the, there are retentions, the district has to keep those for a certain period of time as well. Okay?
Has OSBA done any initial evaluation or review of these applicants?
Um, my review is very, very brief, so I go through, um, the candidates as they're coming in and I just kind of make if I see something that's glaringly missing, like they didn't provide what their high school was, or they didn't provide enough of their educational background, or if they didn't submit their qualities and qualification statement. If there's enough time before the, um, thing closes, I will email the candidates and I'll be like, hey, I noticed that you are missing this whole section of your application. Um, did you have something to submit or did you want to submit? And then at that point, they have to tell me whether or not the only way they can submit something that they haven't done already is that I have to put their application back into a draft status. And when I do that, that means it won't be submitted when the deadline passes, so I have to have their verbal permission in order to do that. They have to make the changes. I can't make changes. I can't add anything to it for them. It's all based on what they can do. Um, and then they have to resubmit it before that timeline closes. So really it's the big things, like if I see a letter of interest missing, or if I see their qualities and qualifications narrative missing, um, their resume missing. Um, if there's certain personal information that I need in order to do their background check later, if they become a finalist, then I will let them know, hey, you need to go back and put these things in there. But for the most part, these people are applying for a position and everyone's applying. And if there are people who can fill out all the things and others who don't, you know, that sometimes that's a choice. Um, I did have some people who said, no, I'm not going to submit a statement. Okay, it's required. Not for this search, another one. Um, so that's really the only thing we do initially because the rankings are, I just make sure it's there so that you at least have something to look at. And if it's not there, or if I don't get to them before the date, um, or get any communications back then, then their application is submitted as is, and then that's up to you to make those decisions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions about the rating sheets and what you're looking for? Before we head over and start looking about how to actually go into Revellis?
Yep.
Don't see anything popping up. Um, so at this time, Chair, um, we would be ready to go into the executive session portion of this meeting so that we can pull up our platform, which will have confidential information. Um, so.
Alright, I will move everybody over to a breakout room right now.
Okay. Um, we are now ready to, you want to do that first and then, and then let me read?
You need to read it here and then.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, pursuant to O R S one nine two dash or dot six six zero subsection two subsection A to consider the employment of a public official officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. We are now going into executive session. David, are we are already, are we in our executive session now?
No, I'm, I'm working on it right now.
Okay. I'm just eating a granola bar, so I'm gonna. Up here.
Hold on, I, it's trying to split you guys up and I'm trying to get you all in the same room, one sec.
Is there anybody on here that has not signed a confidentiality agreement?
There is one.
Okay. Can you just kick them off?
Yeah. Um. Okay, you should get something that says join the breakout room.
David, are you back yet? I don't see him on here yet. David, if you're talking, you're on mute.
We are off mute.
Oh, okay, perfect. All right, sounds like we're all back and it's time to have this meeting come to a close. So thank you so much for joining us this evening and we are adjourning our board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Later, so nice to meet you Brian.
Good night everybody.
Good night. Bye Michelle, bye everyone.